The man of the hour said it's time to get things started, so if you would all please pray with me. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, dear Lord, we just thank you so very much for allowing us to gather here today to recognize Michael and his family. Dear Lord, we just ask that you be with him as the judge of the four hundred and seventy seventh judicial district court. Please give him the wisdom and the knowledge to have your will and justice be done. Dear Lord, as we head into this new year in two thousand and twenty five, we just pray for our leaders and elected officials, dear Lord. We just pray that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge to have not our will, but your will be done, dear Lord. We also say a special prayer for all of those families affected by the wildfires, dear Lord. We pray that you just be with them and please comfort them, provide them protection. Just please be with all the volunteers and the first responders and please provide them with the protection and the encouragement and the courage to go forward, dear Lord, to help extinguish these fires and protect life and property. Dear Lord, we ask all of these things in your precious son's name. Amen.
And I'll go ahead and lead in the pledge of allegiance, first of the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll get the second one, right? Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good afternoon. I want to welcome you to the investiture of Judge Michael Dickens of the be the first judge of the four hundred and seventy seventh district court here in Denton County. I want to thank you for being here to celebrate this wonderful, wonderful occasion. The other day, Michael asked me, he said, I'd like it if you could come up and say a few words. And so I'm honored that he asked me to say a few words, although I have a sneaky suspicion he did it so that he would be much younger looking than the gray-haired old man in the three sixty second district court. So I've known Michael. He started in the DA's office back in two thousand and one. And he's tried many cases. Sometime he was even in my court for a little while. I've known for a long time, so when I found out that he was appointed, sent me an email, said, hey, come by and see me, so we can talk about some things. He said, great, I'll be right over. And so he came over and I said, hey, congratulations. I want to congratulate you on this and let you know a few things about what's going on. He sat down, he had his notepad out. He had a big smile on his face. And he goes, so first question, Judge is, what, what's my caseload gonna be? And I said, that's a very good question, Michael. And I said, the answer is, it'll be all civil cases. Michael kind of looked at me and he still had that smile on his face. He didn't take any notes. And I know what he was thinking. What he was thinking was, was, you understand, I've been in the DA's office for the past twenty five years, right? But I knew that. And I said, it's okay, Michael, I said, you're gonna be fine. I said, but there's something else. And he goes, still had that smile on his face, said, he goes, what is it? Well, we don't have a courtroom for you yet. Still had that smile. No notes. And he goes, well, I guess it could be worse. And I said, yeah, like, maybe we don't have an office for you or anything. And he looked at me, he goes, there's no office? I said, what? Said, no, you don't have an office. But the good news is that the district judges, the county judges, commissioner's court, we're all working together. And we will solve that problem and we have a solution. And we will have a solution so that the four hundred and seventy seventh district court will have a home. And so Michael will have a home. But the main message I want to give you today is that the governor appointed the right person for the job. I've known Michael for many years and I know that he's been in the courtroom. He's tried hundreds of cases ranging from just theft through drug cases, aggravated sexual assault of a child. He knows his way around the courtroom. So he's the right man. He has the legal experience need. I did ask him, I said, so you don't have any civil experience coming into this? And he said, no, no. As a matter of fact, when I first graduated from law school, the first year I worked for a civil firm and, and we did some, I did some pleadings and appeared in civil court. I said, see, it's a natural. You'll be a natural. And, and I really do believe that. And the reason why is this, is because I know Michael, I know his demeanor, I know how he treats people. I know that he's hardworking. He's already, he told me in the meeting, I guess I need to start doing some continuing legal education and start looking up presentations and seminars. And that's what he spent this last weekend doing. And he's already working hard. And so the message is, I have complete confidence that he will be a very successful judge. Because the last three judges that took the bench before I did, Justice Lee Gabriel, Judge L D Shipman, Judge Vicki Isaacs, all came out of the DA's office prior to them being on the bench. And so we have the history of it working out and being very successful. For that, I know that he, Michael, will be very, very successful as a district judge, no matter what his caseload is. And so to give some more remarks on what he's done in the past is another former judge who's a former DA and who was my boss for several years until they kicked me out, Judge LeAnn Breeding.
Can I speak, can y'all hear me? Usually not a problem. Welcome to Michael's Investor. There are so many people here that either worked in the DA's office or I've worked with, it's just amazing. So thank you all for coming out. Michael called me on our snow day last week and asked if I would say a few words and told me a few things that I'd forgotten over twenty years ago. So, so I was a DA for twenty three years, sixteen of it here in Denton County. And Michael reminded me that I actually am the one that conducted his first interview. We did, used to do interviews where we do a first interview and then we had what was known as the double jeopardy round, where you got to come in and talk with four, you know, of the bosses. The elected district attorney who's here, Mr. Bruce Isaacs, myself. That time was Roger Jones was head of the felony section. Some of y'all worked for him. And also at that time was Lisa Decker. Both of those people have retired to New Mexico and they were in the midst of wildfires last year. So anyway, so he asked to remind me, and I was the one that asked him when he came in to interview. Okay, so for those of you who are not attorneys, law school is bad enough. They try to beat, you know, any common sense out of you, I guess, for lack of a better word. And then you have to sit for the bar exam, which is a torture for two days or two and a half days, depending on what it is now. And then after you take that in July, you have to wait till November to hear what happened. That's a lot of fun. So Michael came in the day the bar results were out. And of course, we had seen them. And I said, so do you want to know your results? I already knew them. I wouldn't be that cruel, despite what people think. And I already knew he had passed, but he goes, um, yes. And I said, you passed. So we finished the interview. So when he was in talking to me about it the other day, he mentioned that he had been out in the waiting room with somebody he went to law school with who said to him, hey, the bar results are out and I passed. And so Michael said to his friend, so what about me? And he goes, I didn't see your name. I didn't know that then. I know that now. So Michael's always been a really hard worker. He's always been very dedicated, both from the time I've seen him. I didn't ever try anything with him when he was in the DA's office. I did get to try a capital murder case with him once I left the DA's office. And I can tell you, he's as hardworking as Judge McFarlane just said, very dedicated. So I think you'll, the government made a good choice in making a decision with somebody that has trial experience. When I took the bench, I didn't have a whole lot of family law or civil because I'd been in the DA's office just like him. And I can remember the first civil cases I got from the eight other courts, thank you very much. When I said, okay, trial docket, you're number one, you're number two, you're number three. And they're like, uh, what do you mean? And I'm like, you're going to trial. And they're like, uh, well, we're not ready. I'm like, this case was filed in two thousand and thirteen. Yes, you are ready. And they worked it out. So some things, sometimes things work out, Michael. The other thing he wanted me to remind people, or he reminded me, is that Judge Alexander and Michael, Judge Michael, Judge Michael Dickens, and Judge Shipman, all are what they call the class of two thousand and one. They came to the DA's office then. I didn't remember that either, so it's nice to be reminded of things that we forget. And with that, I'd like to introduce Judge Sherri Shipman, who's gonna come up and do the swearing in.
Judge Dickens and Maggie? All right. If you'll repeat after me. I, Michael Dickens.
I, Michael Dickens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of district judge.
The duties of office of district judge.
Of the four hundred and seventy seventh judicial district court.
Of the four hundred and seventy seventh judicial district court.
For Denton County, Texas.
For Denton County, Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the great state of Texas.
And of the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So the first thing I want to do is I want to thank all of you for being here. I want to also thank God for this. This is an amazing day. It's a, it's a great day for me and my family. And I want to also thank Governor Greg Abbott for, for having the confidence to, to appoint me to this position to be the first judge of the four hundred and seventy seventh district court. I'm so happy and excited and even though I'm kind of like a man without a country, I have no courtroom. I have no bailiff. I have no court reporter. I have no court coordinator or even a robe. I'm really excited about this opportunity and I am confident this is gonna be a great court. And I think it's just gonna be fabulous and I'm so happy and excited. And I'm so happy and excited that so many of you people are here today because it's kind of like your wedding a little bit. You see all these people from your past, all your friends and family and people you spent so much time with. And I've spent a lot of time, I've spent so much time with many of you people, much more so than even a lot of my own relatives. So I, I really appreciate you being here and a lot of you are part of my story. And so that's why it's so special to have you here today. And so I want to thank Bruce Isaacs back in two thousand and one, he's the person that hired me. I appreciate that so much. I appreciate you having the confidence in me to, to bring me to the DA's office. That really means a lot. I appreciate Judge Breeding being here today, the person that told me I passed the bar exam. By the way, that guy out there in the lobby, I wasn't too thrilled with him, but I never saw him again after that. So we just kind of had to let that one go. But that was a great day and a great moment. So from the moment I set foot in the Denton County courthouse, it seems like it's just been home. It seems like it's been so great, so I have just loved it. And I'm not at the DA's office anymore as of about, I don't know, fifteen minutes ago. So I'm gonna try to do my best to be the kind of judge that anybody would want to be in front of. I want to do my best to have an allegiance only to the law, to try to make sure that I do my best to uphold the law, to treat all parties fairly with dignity and respect. Whether it's a criminal case, a family law case, a civil case, it doesn't matter. I'm gonna try to do my best to be the kind of judge that people feel like, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were in front of Michael or I'm glad to be going in front of him. Not because they think they're gonna win or lose, but because they believe that they're gonna be treated with dignity and respect and that they're gonna think that he tried to do his best to follow the law and apply the law correctly. That's what I want to do. That's the judge I want to try to be. And so I'm gonna work as hard as I can and study as hard as I can to try to be that kind of judge. While we're here, I also want to thank some other people, a lot of other people, some very, very special people. First off, I want to thank Paul Johnson. Paul, I appreciate you having me in the DA's office since two thousand and seven and giving me and my family the opportunity to be here and have me in the felony trial division, have me in the crimes against children unit and every other courtroom that you assign me to. I appreciate you so much. Jamie Beck and Michael Moore, the first assistant and the chief felony prosecutor. I have enjoyed working with you and under you. There's so many other people that I'm so glad to be here today. My first chief prosecutor, Kristina Tura, I saw her when I walked in. I'm so thankful for her. Jeff Fleming, who's up there in the upper deck next to Rick Daniel, my first felony chief prosecutor. And Rick Daniel, who I was with him in the crimes against children unit. One of the smartest, two of the smartest attorneys I've ever been around. If I had a question, what am I supposed to do? What's the law? I would go to those guys and they would know what to do. They would know what to say. So I appreciate it. You guys made me a better lawyer and I hope you also made me a better person. I appreciate you so much. There's so many other people that are in the DA's office that, that I've been so happy to work with, so fortunate to work with. And I can't mention everybody, can't get to everybody. The last two attorneys I worked with, Bonnie Snell and Megan War, so affectionately dubbed as my work family because I'm the old guy, I'm their work dad. I've appreciated being with them. Other people in the office, Paul Hemke, Rachel Nichols, Lindsay Shegitt, Jesse Davis, so many other people. Y'all are some of my best friends, Michelle Dobson, some of my, not only my best friends in the DA's office, but some of my best friends in the world. So I appreciate you so much. I appreciate all the judges here in Denton County and I want to tell everybody something. When I was appointed, this, this appointment came down on Monday and I got an email the Friday before that said, hey, we're thinking about you, basically. And they, it was strongly implying I was gonna get, be appointed. And the director of the Office of Governor Appointments said, I recommend you don't talk to anybody about this. So I made good on that and I didn't tell anybody until Monday after the announcement came out. I didn't even tell my wife over the weekend. That was the hardest, weirdest weekend. I never have fancied myself somebody that's real good at withholding evidence or being deceptive. So that was weird. That was just weird. But if the governor showed up and asked, did you, did you talk about this or not, I can make good on that and say I didn't. So, but what I want to tell you about your district court judges and your county court judges here in Denton County, they have been so hospitable to me and so kind and courteous and generous with their time. They have all said to me, everyone that I've talked to, and I've talked to almost every one of them, met with almost every one of them. There are so many of them, the county courts, the district courts, every single one of them have said, Michael, you come talk to us anytime. There's no such thing as a bad question or a dumb question. Every single one of them, I'm telling you, have been super and you need to know that about your judges here. They have been absolutely fabulous and I appreciate you. And I'm looking forward to working with my new coworkers here, the district court judges. I'm so proud and so happy to be here with you. And I'm so happy, Judge Shipman was the one that swore me in. We started in the DA's office. I started on November nineteenth, two thousand and one. And we shared an office in the misdemeanor division together for well over a year. So it was very special to me that she was the person here today that administered the oath of office and I appreciate you. I appreciate Judge Burgess as well, Judge Burgess and Judge Shipman. Between the two of them, I've been there the last ten years in their courtrooms. And I'm very appreciative of all my new friends, all my new colleagues here that I've, that I've met and that I've worked with. I appreciate Judge Jim Johnson. I appreciate Judge Jim Johnson. He has been absolutely fabulous, letting me hang around, watch court, talking to me about every issue. And I appreciate it. I appreciate that so much. The kind of judge that I want to be, I want to be someone that can always help. I want to be someone that's part of the solution and never part of a problem. And that's what I want to try to do. Some of the other people that I want to individually recognize here, I want to recognize my, my family. My son, Christopher, my daughter Caroline, my daughter Claire, my mother, my dad, they're all here today. I have an aunt and an uncle here as well. My daughter Catherine is all here. These children, I think that the greatest gift in life that any man can have is a wife and children. And so I have a wonderful wife. I have four wonderful kids. And so I feel like I'm the wealthiest man in the world. I say we're rich in family, guys. And so in that regard, I feel like I'm more wealthy than Donald Trump, Elon Musk, and Warren Buffett all put together. So I'm so lucky to have them. So the kind of judge that I want to be, I don't ever want to legislate from the bench. I just want to try to do my best to follow the law. I want to try to do my best to make everyone proud and make the governor proud of this pick here today. And I appreciate so many of you for being here. And I know I haven't mentioned everybody by name. I can't do, I can't, I just can't do that because I see everybody in this courtroom and I see so many friends. And you all are part of my story. And I could not have been here had it not been for you. I could not have been here had it not been for my family. I could not have done this at all without you. You're the ones that kind of made this possible. I appreciate so many members of the defense bar. I see so many of them here today. I see Rick Hagan. I see Carrie Peel. I see Sarah Roland. I see so many of you that I've had so many cases with, had so many trials with. And you guys, y'all sharpened me and made me better, I think. So I appreciate you and I appreciate the job that you've done. So thank you so much. The one person that I haven't really mentioned, and there's a lot of people I haven't mentioned, but there's one notable person that, that I haven't mentioned yet at all. That's, that's my wife Maggie. She's here in the front row. So, so in life, we all make a lot of decisions as an adult. I am fifty years old. So I've got fifty years worth of decisions under my belt, some good, some bad, some worked out, some didn't work out. So that's just the way it goes. But the best decision I ever made in my life by far was made on June tenth of two thousand in Waco, Texas. That's the day that I asked Maggie to marry me. And it has just worked out so well. It's been just so wonderful. And I couldn't have done any of this without her. And she has made every day just the greatest. And like I said, when you have a good wife and you have kids, you're the richest man in the world. And I feel like that, that's what I've been. So I just want to say again, thank you for all of you being here. And I'm gonna do everything I can to be the best possible judge that I can be. And I've said to so many people, if they see me doing something, they think, hey, Michael, you could do this better or you could do that better, I'm always open to listening. Because I don't ever want to be the judge that is too big for his britches. I don't want to be the judge that knows everything and that thinks he knows everything about everything that's ever, ever been. So I appreciate you. I thank you and God bless you.